And I just wanted to make sure that we had gone over that. I know some of you are in the audience for a reason, but I just wanted to make sure I explained that. Thank you all and welcome to the April 2nd City Council Meeting. Roll call please.
Counselor Mateen?
Here.
Counselor Brooke?
Here.
Counselor White?
Here.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes, here.
And Mayor Marbury?
Here. I'm going to begin tonight with a proclamation on Equal Pay Day. And would Fay Schrader please come to the podium? Fay is the Public Policy Liaison with the American Association of University Women in Durango. Equal Pay Day, whereas more than 50 years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act in 1963, women, especially minority women, continue to suffer the consequences of unequal pay. And whereas in 1963, women who worked full-time year-round made 59 cents on average for every dollar earned by men. And whereas according to the 2016 U.S. Census Bureau report, women working full-time year-round on average earn 80 percent of what men earn, indicating little change or progress in pay equity. And whereas according to the National Committee on Pay Equity, over a working career of 47 years, women's total estimated earnings loss compared with men is $700,000 for a high school graduate, 1.2 million for a college graduate, and 2 million for a professional school graduate. And whereas a lifetime of lower pay means women have less income to save for retirement and less income counted in a social security or pension benefit formula. And whereas nearly five in 10 mothers are primary breadwinners in their households, and nearly two-thirds are primary or significant earners, thus pay equity is critical to families' economic security. And whereas according to graduating to a pay gap, a 2012 research report by the American Association of University Women, the gender pay gap is evident one year after college graduation, even after controlling for factors known to affect earnings such as occupation, hours worked, and college major. And whereas according to a 2017 report by the Women's Foundation of Colorado, if Colorado women earned the same as comparable men, the poverty rate for all working women would be cut in half. And whereas in pay equity, progress continues at the rate since 1963, Colorado's gender wage gap will not close until the year 2057. And whereas in 2009, the Lilly Ledbetter Fair Pay Act was signed into law, which guarantees employees their day in court to challenge a pay gap. And whereas we must now pass the Paycheck Fairness Act, which would amend the 1963 Equal Pay Act by closing loopholes and improving the law's effectiveness. And whereas fair pay equity policies can be implemented simply and without undue cost of hardship in both the public and private sectors. And whereas fair pay strengthens the security of families today and eases future retirement costs while enhancing the American economy. And whereas Tuesday, April the 2nd, symbolizes the time in 2019 when the wages paid to American women catch up to the wages paid to men from the previous year. Now therefore I, sweetie Marbury, Mayor Durango, and single mother, schoolteacher, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April the 2nd, 2019, as Equal Pay Day. Let's give a round of applause.
And I'm sure that Ms. Schrader would like to add a few words.
I would, thank you. I don't need to add much given all the far ass clauses in this document. I thank you, sweeter ma- sweeter.
You called me sweeter.
Sweeter, sweeter, yeah, sweeter Mayor Marbury, thank you. I thank you for the reading of this. I thank City Council and the manager's office for taking my pros and putting it in this elegant document. That's really, that's very special, I appreciate that. I can tell you that last week, the Paycheck Fairness Act passed the House of Representatives and now goes to the Senate. And so I urge all of you to contact your senators, Senator Bennett, Senator Gardner, and urge them to also sign off on that act. So one small last thing, we had eight merchants, local merchants, who gave 20 percent off in the goods or merchandise to women and girls today. Of those eight merchants, there's only one that will be open until nine o'clock, and that's, that's the ice cream shop, Cream Bean Berry. So if you all are interested in ice cream and 20 percent off, the girls, you can take your boyfriends if you like, or you're seeing the beginning of partners, but do them. So I thank all of you and do, do think about this, this, this paycheck fairness and equal wage and keep up the good fun. So thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Thank you so much. There are a lot of girls in the audience, so someone paved the way for you way back in 1963. I would like to call up Jeff DuPont to the podium. He's the chairman of the Board of Directors for the Boys and Girls Club. With, and he, I'm gonna let you introduce your boys. Please do.
This is my son Sawyer Will D. Ponte and our surrogate son Sage. He's a, he's a good friend of Sawyer's. And this is the Youth of the Month this year. Have you read it?
This month.
This month? This is the Youth of the Month last year.
Last month?
For prime, last month. Not last year, last month.
Okay dad.
Yeah, sorry.
Well, this is a proclamation for the National Boys and Girls Club Week, April the 8th through April the 12th. Whereas the young people of the city of Durango are tomorrow's leaders. I got all choked up on that one. Whereas, well, I was a school teacher, so why wouldn't I get choked up? Whereas many young people benefit from intentional youth development programs and activities designed to assist them in achieving their full potential. And whereas more than 1,285 children and teens are served annually by the Boys and Girls Club of La Plata County. The Boys and Girls Club is located on Main Street through programs that are affordable and accessible to all families. Whereas the Boys and Girls Club instills young people with the self-confidence to believe they can succeed at anything they put their mind to and stand at the forefront of efforts in academic success, good character, citizenship, and healthy lifestyles. And whereas the Boys and Girls Club helps ensure young people have a safe, supportive place to spend time engaged in quality youth development programs led by trusted adult role models. And whereas the Boys and Girls Club will celebrate National Boys and Girls Club Week with more than 4,000 Boys and Girls Clubs and over 2 million children and teens nationwide. Now therefore I, sweetie Marbury, Mayor Durango, Colorado, do proclaim April 8th through the 12th as National Boys and Girls Club Week. Let's give them a round of applause. And I'm going to ask Jeff to say a few words on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club.
So I just want to say thank you to the city for, for your support of the club over the years and remind everyone that we have our big fundraiser coming up. If you haven't gotten your invitation for April 26th, we have the breakfast and lunch, which I know I've seen a lot of your faces at in the past and we appreciate your support. We're happy to serve the community. We have a new program coming into Big Picture High School, which started this year and this fall, and we're happy about that. And we're looking at future expansion in Three Springs as well. So we're, we're expanding our reach, we're serving more and more teens every day, and we appreciate the support we get from all of you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We are moving into the consent agenda. The consent agenda is intended-
There's a presentation from-
Oh, sorry, San Juan Basin Health Department. You just get to that podium. Thank you, sir.
I'm here, I'm here. Sure.
A little technical difficulty.
We got a new computer and it's locking us up quicker than I would like.
As they work on technology, if anyone came in late and would like to speak to the City Council on an item not on the agenda, that would be during public participation and you need to come and sign in down at the table, just as a reminder.
It really does not want to wake up. Thank you for everyone's patience, sorry about this.
Sawyer, while we wait, do you want to come up and give us a speech?
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah.
So my name's Kristen Pilati, I'm the Director of Assessment and Planning for San Juan Basin Public Health. And San Juan Basin Public Health is a local public health agency that serves all residents of La Plata and Archuleta Counties. And we perform all the Public Health Act required duties of a local public health department for everyone who lives here. So what I'm here to talk to you about tonight is a brief recap of the results of our community health assessment, which is something I was here about a year ago asking you all to participate in. And to tell you how we're going to turn that information into a five-year strategic plan and what you'll see in the community because of that public health improvement plan, which from here on out I will call a FIP because it is a lot shorter than saying public health improvement plan every time. So, it's working, just in time. Do I just see the arrows?
Yep.
Okay. Great. So what is assessment and planning? I mentioned is a core service that we're required to perform as a local public health department. What that means is that every five years we're required to assess community health. We do it far more frequently than that, but this is an official community health assessment to develop our five-year strategic plan. I also do ongoing program monitoring to make sure our programs do what they say they're going to do and to develop new ones as community needs evolve and change. So the community health assessment was a survey that was opened last year from January through April for anyone who lives in Archuleta, La Plata Counties that was over the age of 18. You can do this community health assessment in any way that you see fit, and so we chose to do an online survey as well as paper copies of that survey. We had about a little over 1,000 people responded and the population breakdown you can see was that heavily favored La Plata County, there are a lot more people that live in La Plata County. So seeing it this, this is actually a representative split in the population between those two counties, so we feel pretty good about those numbers. We asked people in your own words, please tell us what the most important health issue is that's facing your community, and then we categorized those words because otherwise we would have just had thousands of words on a sheet and it wouldn't have been that easy to understand. So most of the responses fit into one of these categories. You can see that we had hundreds of people commenting on mental health and two of my staff members picked emergency preparedness and response as the most important thing. I'm pretty sure that's who did that. And then we had some other responses that didn't quite fit into any of those categories. But that was our starting point for what do people care about most. And you can see it's all pretty heavy on the kind of typical health. People didn't really think about environmental health activities when not given any prompts. So that changed a little bit when we gave people prompts and said, rank these specific issues in order of importance. Four would be the most important, one would be the lowest. The top concerns prioritized by people, you can see here, the top three of suicide and suicide attempts, affordable housing and substance abuse are clustered very close together and are very high scores. So those are things people thought were the most important issues impacting their health. And then poverty and availability of jobs were also paired very closely. So this tells us a couple things. One, our community is pretty savvy and they understand that health isn't just about medical care, there's a lot of things that play into health. It also tells us there's a lot of room for improvement on issues that aren't just public health issues, right? Public health doesn't own the affordable housing issue, but we're happy to partner with people on addressing it. So we know that all of these things aren't going to be things that just public health does alone. There are some things missing from this. We do a ton of work in environmental health. We do chronic disease prevention because cardiovascular diseases and cancer are the leading causes of death in our communities. We need to educate people about public health concepts and emergency preparedness will continue to be important. Remember that not many people picked air quality as an issue? That's because our survey closed in April. In June, that question would have looked a lot different, right? So survey results are a snapshot in your mind and you have to make sure that you understand everything that's happening around them. That's why we know that a survey alone doesn't tell us how to make a five-year strategic plan. We also have to look at health indicators and data and listen to what our staff tells us is happening at the state, regional, and local level because our staff are experts at what they do. So to develop that five-year plan, we take into account all of these issues. And it goes dark. It is so sad. Uh-oh. You're just getting to the cool part. Okay, well, the cool part, and I have copies for people who would like to see that, and I can pass them around, of our public health improvement plan, you will adapt. We created a neat graphic that is a roadmap for how we're going to address issues in the future. The top, let me back up, at the last public health improvement plan, we identified obesity, access to care, and assessment and planning as our top three priority issues. They hired me, I do assessment and planning. Access to care is still important, but the number of people are the- in our communities, so that's a good thing. And if you looked at those three issues, a lot of our staff won't include it in those activities. So it doesn't mention environmental health and that's a lot of what we do, right? So our new plan, the top three issues are social determinants of health, behavioral health, and environmental health. And again, as I mentioned, those social determinants, that housing, the economic opportunity, we know that we don't own that alone and we're hoping that we can partner in the future with people to address that. The next four issues that are still priorities but are not the top three that were screaming out to us, pay attention to us, are health behaviors, emergency preparedness and response, communicable disease, and clinical care linkage. So for example, we want to work on social determinants of health before we work on health behaviors because it's hard to tell people to buy healthy food and eat healthy food if they're struggling to afford food at all, right? So we need to work on those social determinants before we can work on those next things. Communicable disease prevention and education will always be a public health concern because no one else is doing that sort of surveillance epidemiology education. That is a public health cornerstone activity and so it will always be a priority for us. So then we have those seven issues and we are going to apply three goals to track how we improve on those issues. Those goals are community resilience, which is about building a community that can respond to and rebound from health issues that impact them. Organizational capacity, so making sure that you have a health department that is well-trained and that has enough funding to actually perform programs. And then public health innovation, which means that we're going to use data and science to develop new programs. As community health needs evolve, our health department will evolve too. We're not going to be doing public health that people did 50 years ago, we'll be on the leading edge of how to respond to these issues. So that is the brief version of your new public health improvement plan, and I'd be happy to tell you more at some other date. And you can find this pamphlet on the San Juan Basin Public Health website. You can also, there's an interactive clickable icon, so you can learn a lot more about each of these issues. If you said, okay, I sort of understand health behaviors, but I'd like to learn more, you can play around with that on our website. And we'll be doing community presentations about this, so if this is of interest to you, be happy to come and give you additional detail about how you're going to see public health improvement planning in your everyday life.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
I'd like to add a comment at this time. We received a notice today that the director of the Health Department, Leigh Angelon, is receiving a master's degree from the Naval Postgraduate School in Security. And her focus was basically emergency planning as it engages homelessness, which, you know, she clearly chose a topic that is directly relevant to the public health mission in Durango. And we look forward to her efforts when she comes back. And I believe she's on leave this week, I'm guessing she's going to graduation.
Thank you, Counselor White. We're moving into the consent agenda. The consent agenda is intended to allow the City Council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under item number six. Would you give us a review, please?
Items 4.1 through 4.3 are approval of minutes. Item 4.1 is for the City Council's special meeting on March 12th, 2019. Item 4.2 is for the study session on March 12th, 2019. Item 4.3 is for the regular meeting on March 19th, 2019. Items 4.4 through 4.6 are discussion and possible action items. Item 4.4 concerns the Villas at Hillcrest Phase IV Final As-Built Platte. Item 4.5 concerns approval of an updated and revised version of the rules and procedures for Boards and Commission Manual. And item 4.6 regards action on the creation of a project and a resolution authorizing an additional appropriation in the Airport Capital Projects Fund for a terminal area planned study.
Thank you very much. Would any council like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
One second. Roll call please.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Mateen?
Yes.
Counselor Brooke?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes. We're moving into public participation. And City Manager, would you see who signed in? Public participation in this section is set aside to provide comments or ask questions regarding items that do not otherwise appear on the agenda. City Council usually will not respond to questions from the dais. Citizens should address their comments directly to City Council. Citizens wishing to speak during this section of the agenda shall sign in prior to the start of the meeting, identifying their name and address on the form provided at the meeting. Citizens will be called individually by name by the mayor to come to the podium to address the City Council. You'll have three minutes to speak. The City Manager will signal 30 seconds remaining by raising his hand. And if you had any audiovisual material, they needed to be submitted to the City Clerk on or before noon of the day of the meeting. And from Durango High School Ski Team, we have Bill. Would you please come up, Bill?
Sure, I'd just like for the kids to actually-
Absolutely, come on up, as they say. Everybody, come on down to the podium. And I'd like for each of the students to introduce themselves, Bill. Come right down by that podium, the camera will pick you up.
All right, well, why don't you just tell us your name and what grade you're in?
My name is Nova Davis and I am senior.
My name is Claudia Luvia, I'm a junior.
I'm Stevie Cameron, I'm a junior.
Tussland Stedtr, I'm a senior.
I'm Joe Robbins, junior.
Hallie Moore, freshman.
Logan Moore, I'm a junior.
Hannah Harvey, freshman.
Emily LaSage, I'm the head coach of the Alpine Team.
I'm Evan Elliott, I'm the head coach of the Nordic Ski Team.
Well, I wanted to say congratulations to all of you. I presented awards at the Colorado State Ski Championship a few weeks back at Fort Lewis, and I saw these great kids from Durango. So this program has been rejuvenated and come back to Durango. And so, Coach, would you like to give us some information about the program, the teams, how they compete, their travel? Please come to the podium.
Sure. So like I said, my name's Leah. I have been the head coach of the Alpine Program now, this was our third season. We had one athlete that participated in Nordic last season, and then we had, I think, 15 competing in Nordic this season. We had three Nordic students make the Allstate Team this year. Noah, Hannah, or no, sorry, Hallie and Logan, all were on the Allstate Team. Both men's and women's ski teams this year were the academic Allstate Champions. So that means that our grade point average was higher than any other winter sport in Colorado.
Say that one more time. Say that one more time.
I know, we didn't get a lot of recognition for that, but it's kind of a big deal. So the girls had a 3.94 and the boys had a 3.86 combined, and so that was impressive and I was happy to do that. Personally, I'd like to thank the city for supporting Chapman Hill because the Alpine Team, we trained there and we wouldn't be able to have a ski team if we didn't have that opportunity. Matt Morrisey and Tim Kous did a tremendous job to help us with the state meet this year with 40 inches of snow in two days trying to run a ski race, so that was a challenge. But all the kids and athletes and coaches, parents and travelers, we had, I think, 500 plus athletes and other school teams here for that event. They all will not forget Durango for the amount of snow we had, which is not typical. We're looking forward to a great year next year. We do travel all over the state and the school supports those efforts. And we just look to keep building and allowing our high school students to have the opportunity to continue to ski races in both Alpine and Nordic. I can have, turn it over to Evan, he can talk a little bit about the Nordic Program too.
So this is our first year as, with the Nordic Program in Durango. They used to have it back when my dad was a kid, which he's 76 now, so. But it was great, it was our first year and I think we hit the ground running really well. The state meet, we, I think we did a great job pulling it off, like Leah said, with 40 inches of snow. That's a lot of snow to pack down and get it groomed, but we had a great turnout, seven Nordic skiers made states, so first year I think we did pretty well.
I think it's wonderful. And we've had so many Olympic skiers come from Durango. Mike Elliott, the Barnes Girls, for example, more names than I'm sure I can't remember all of them, but I bet there's a future Olympian right here in this room. And if, we look forward to all of the hard, I know it's a lot of hard work and I know you travel, and then you keep your grades up, superstars. So I really want to congratulate you and especially tell your families how much we appreciate them. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I bet you have homework to do, so you don't have to stay. Adam Howell, please, come to the podium.
I'm sorry, this is a sample of public hearing.
Oh, okay, that's fine. That will conclude the public hearing. Absolutely. Thank you, Bill, and good night. The next legislative hearing is 8.1.1, a public hearing to consider land use and development code text amendments to update the SIGN Code. If you wanted to talk about the SIGN Code at a, at the public hearing, you needed to sign in as well at the forms on the table. And they'll be bringing up the technology shortly and we'll have the staff present an initial presentation about the SIGN Code and then open it up to public testimony.
Mayor Marbury, I was gonna say it's never too late to vote, but it's now 7:00, 10:00 o'clock.
I think it's too late.
Those candidates are in the office tonight, but it's too late, we can't, hopefully we can't vote anymore. So we'll be looking for some results here shortly.
A little bit.
Within an hour or so, hopefully.
All right.
We're excited to hear.
Ms. O'Brien, are you the presenter tonight?
Okay. I'm gonna try to keep the computer alive. Colleen O'Brien in Community Development, and I'm here to talk to you about the SIGN Code. First, I want to go over the process that's brought us here today about a year ago. About a year ago, we started a process to update our sign code. And that was triggered by the Supreme Court ruling, Reed versus Gilbert, that required all sign codes to be content neutral, which means we had to be able to enforce the sign code without reading what was on the sign, because that would be a violation of your First Amendment rights. And what that really impacted was our temporary sign, temporary sign portion of our code. And so throughout this entire process, that included a lot of stakeholder meetings, open houses, public meetings, city council study sessions. We got a lot of feedback about all that. The main topics tend to be temporary signs, particularly banners and small portable signs. So on February 19th, we brought to you the updated sign code, and City Council approved it with a few, with some direction to staff. And that direction was to shorten the length of which banners could be displayed, formulate a registration program for banners, and to create a permitting process for small portable signs. And since then, we had a public meeting on March 7th, where we had around 30 people show up. Many of them were businesses from the Central Business District. And then we had a study session with City Council on March 12th. And then the amendments went to Planning Commission on March 18th, where they moved to approve them, and then we are here today. So before we get into the details, I want to just clarify the difference between the text amendments and the guidelines. So we're here today to approve the text amendments, the land use development code. And those require formal action, like we're doing today. But I'm also going to go over some guidelines that correspond with those text amendments. And the guidelines are more staff-level, and it has to do with processes, and they can be adjusted more easily than text amendments. So we have to make adjustments along the way we're able to do that. So we're gonna talk about banners and temporary, and small portable signs. These are both temporary signs, and our current code allows for one temporary sign per business. And so keep that in mind going forward. Businesses can be able to have five banners and 10 sandwich board signs. They're allowed one at a time.
Either or?
Yes, either or.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, one temporary sign and all those fit in the temporary sign category. And so first, I want to go into the banner program. So as you all know, a banner is a flexible material that can be applied to building our structure. What I want to point out is teardrop banners are also considered a banner in our code. So that's this type of banner. Both these issues, the community's been really split on, and so I want to go over some of the benefits we've heard from the community and some of the concerns. And so banners, some of the benefits are, they're affordable, they're easy to change, they're great for communicating special events, our sales, and they're temporary. Some of the concerns we've heard from the community are they detract from the architecture, they could replace a permanent sign, they cause visual clutter, they can be difficult to track and enforce, and then they also deteriorate easily because they're a temporary material. So City Council already approved the standards for banners, but what you asked us to do is to look into some changes to the length they're displayed in the registration program. And so throughout this presentation, I highlighted in green everything that said text amendments, so you know what we're here to approve. But, so we have some text amendments to the banners, and one's to add online registration requirement, and the other's to change the length of display. So originally, we were proposing 14 days per calendar month, and the feedback we received from you is that was too long. And so what we went with was, businesses were allowed to display a banner six times per year for a maximum of 14 days in a row. And we chose this because what we heard from businesses is they wanted more flexibility to have a banner up for more than seven days, like our old code. And this gave businesses that ability to have a sale for two weeks and have a banner up there, but then also reduce the length of the time banners were going to be displayed per direction received from council. And so here's just a sample of the online banner registration we're gonna have. It's gonna have all the standards, it's easy for businesses to know what the standards are, and then they just have to put their name in, their business address, and then contact information, and then the length of the display and the dimensions of the banners. We want it to be a really easy process for them to register, and then that makes it easier for us to enforce. And so feedback that we heard from the community about this was they wanted the public, they wanted the registration list to be public, and so we're working on ways to do that, so we can upload it, so people can know what banners have been approved or have been registered. And the other feedback was this didn't work very well for special events. And so in particularly, if you think about the Durango Farmers Market, they have an event once a week all summer long, and they need to put up a banner during their event. And so only allowing them six times per year doesn't really work for them. And there's lots of examples that fall in that category. So we're recommending another text amendment, and that is that temporary signs may also be approved as part of a special use permit, a temporary use permit or a special events permit. And that gives us flexibility to come, to create a temporary sign program for those special events. And so that will be able to address that need. And I want to pause here and just get some feedback about the banner text amendments.
Well, I think we'll ask questions a little bit later from you. We're going to open it up for public testimony, and then we'll come back to staff.
That sounds good. Then I'll continue going through.
So...
Do you want me to go through the rest of it?
Oh, yes, by all means.
Okay. So then we'll also go over the small portable signs. So small portable signs are a temporary type of sign intended to be placed on a hard surface. And so these include sandwich board signs, A-frames, sidewalk signs. Those are the most common ones that we see here. Once again, we went to the community about this issue because they were very split, and so we heard some of the benefits and concerns, and I want to share those with you. Some of the benefits we heard is that it's a very effective way to communicate with pedestrians. It adds to downtown vitality. They're easily changed, so if I'm a restaurant and I have specials or happy hours, it's easy for me to communicate that. And then they help to identify hard to find locations. So here's a good example of a business on the second floor that put a sign in their alcove that says "Business Upstairs." So they're very effective for those unique locations. And then some of the concerns were, they cause visual clutter, they can obstruct the sidewalk, they detract from our historic downtown experience and character, sidewalk safety issues, and then liability. And then here's just an example of some sign clutter that we would hope to not see here.
Those are not local signs?
No, that one's not.
Okay.
At the study session, Councilor Youssef asked me to do some research on other historic downtowns. So I looked into these 11 town sign codes to see how they handled small portable signs. What I found is two of the 11 prohibited them altogether, three of the 11 allowed them on private property only, and six of the 11 allowed them on public property. And most of them had some sort of permitting program or standards about location and design. So similar to what we're looking at today.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, of course. Just to give a little history about Durango, since our sign code was in place until 2019, small portable signs were prohibited on public property. In 2015, when the Supreme Court ruling came out, we had a soft hand in enforcing that because we weren't sure how legally defensible that aspect of the sign code was. So that's where I think we've seen a lot more of the small portable signs come up, come up on the sidewalk, and that caused some confusion of whether they were allowed or not. And then 2019, now as we're updating the sign code, it's gonna be the first time that we're looking into allowing them on public property. So first, I want to go over the text amendments. The text amendments are actually pretty simple for the small portable signs. We already have the standards that have been approved. The changes that we're adding are, one, with the material. Before, we prohibited plastic, and we got a lot of feedback that plastic was really just durable and versatile, and it can be, you know, it can have a lot of different finishes to it. So we decided to not prohibit any materials, but instead say it had to meet the character, materials and colors as outlined in the design guidelines. So that's consistent with the rest of our sign code. So we make that one update there. And then the other major update, per City Council's recommendation, is to say that small portable signs in the public right of way must obtain a permit per procedures and guidelines developed by the Community Development Department. And so those are the only text amendments for the small portable signs. But I'm gonna go into those guidelines because they correspond with that directly. So just to clarify, our current code allows, without a permit, for you to have a small portable sign on private property. And what that looks like is in alcoves or on parking lots or any area within your property. And so there's a lot of businesses downtown that are already able to do this, but what Council said is we want to make sure that businesses who don't have this opportunity can display signs as well. And that's why we started the guidelines and the program for small portable signs in the public right of way. And I think a good way to think about this program and guidelines is similar to the bistro table programs. The bistro table program's not in our code, but our code allows us to create a program for that. So we're doing something similar here. The guidelines are not as part of the code, but the code outlines that we can have a permit and program to allow those. Does that make sense? And so here's some of the requirements for the guidelines. The permits can be required per code. The permit holder will assume the liability. And then for location, we're saying that it has to be against the wall, within six feet from the entrance. There must be a four-foot-wide sidewalk clearance maintained at all times. The sign must be stabilized, and we, instead of saying that it be anchored or weighted, we're letting the businesses show us how their sign is stabilized, because there's a few different mechanisms for doing that. So we're letting them choose what's best for their sign. And then we are adding in that for unique situations, staff is able to come up with alternative locations. And then to, and then the final one is that one would be allowed per street level storefront. So I want to go into these a little bit deeper. Because what we heard back, feedback from the community about was location, quantity, materials, and fees. So I want to go over all those areas. So for location, since, you know, assuming we're gonna allow these on public right of way, our goal is to preserve the sidewalks and reduce side clutter. And that kind of balances some of the concerns we've heard from the community. And in order to do so, we're recommending that the sign be within six feet of the entrance. So here's a good example of that. And then against the wall. We did receive some feedback that some businesses wanted to have their signs on this other side. But after some analysis, we determined that there's a lot of, there's a lot of opportunity for conflict having them on the other side. That's where people get out of their cars, they're paying their meters, there's bike racks. So that seemed like that was the ideal location for it. And then also, one concern we heard was that the sidewalk seemed to really clutter, and people felt like they had to dodge the signs. And we feel like by having them all on one side, you don't have that feeling that you have to dip and dive around the signs. And then finally, another benefit is it makes it a lot easier to enforce, and that can save staff time if, you know, code enforcement's going by or parking department's going by. They can easily see that the signs are in compliance with the code, because they know they have to be against the wall and within six feet of the entrance. That's really easy for enforcement. Once again, we have the alternative locations for unique properties. And a good example of this is Grasberger. So we have some properties where their entryway doesn't abut to the public right of way, so requiring the sign be within six feet of the entryway doesn't really make sense, it doesn't help them out. And so that's where we have some flexibility for staff to work with those properties to come up with a permit that works for them. The other, the other area we received feedback was quantity. And we really want to be equitable, but while also reducing sign clutter. The truth of the matter is, if we allowed every business downtown to have a sidewalk sign, there would be no sidewalk. So we're trying to figure out how do we be equitable and also manage that number and preserve that downtown experience and the sidewalk. And so our recommendation is going to have one allowed per street level storefront. And so what does that exactly mean? So here, this business, Elancho, would be able to have a sign, but then this door that goes upstairs would not. Same over here, Care Fusion, is street level storefront, so they'd be allowed one, but the upstairs would not. So that kind of shows that. And we walked around the area, did inventory, and it's pretty clear, it's at 99% of the storefronts where it's allowed and not. There are a few gray areas. And so if you think of Rhodes Bud and Fallen Angel, there's, the entrance is up there, but it's not exactly their entrance. So those are unique ones, and those are, you know, this works for 99% of them. And for these really unique ones, once again, staff has the ability to come up with alternative locations and work with those businesses. The other aspect of quantity we received feedback was buildings with multi-tenant. So once again, there isn't enough space on our sidewalks for every business to have a sign. But what we recommend, what we're recommending is what we do already for signs of multi-tenant is for them to have a master sign program, is this shared signage. And so that's a precedent that we already have that has been working. And a great example of that working really well is the main mall. So they recently put this directory sign in and highlighted all their tenants, so it's easy for people to see. And so I think implementing that program and process forward, the small portable signs should work really well. Let me get my notes out. So the next one was materials. And that we already hit on before, is originally we were gonna prohibit plastic, but instead we're saying it just has to comply with our design guidelines. And our design guidelines say that the sign should be in character with the material, color, and detail of the building. And a good example of that is El Moro. I don't know, I have a picture of their sign, but they made theirs match their building and their trim, and they also used material that was historic and in line with their brand. So it was industrial type of material. So they really used the sign as an extension of their brand, and it fit in well with the downtown area. So that's what we're recommending as far as material and design guidelines. And then the final area we received feedback on was fees. We're recommending a one-time $50 fee for the revocable permit, which is consistent with our current revocable permit fees. And we feel, you know, we don't want it to be a burden to the businesses, but we want it to still offset some of the administration time. We felt like that was a fair fee to have a one-time $50 fee. So that's what we're recommending as part of that. And then just to go over again, the text amendments are for the banner standards, the temporary sign program for special use, temporary use, and special use event permits, and then allowing small portable signs in the public right of way through a revocable permit. The aspect is only the part that applies to the text amendments. The rest are guidelines, which we can adjust as we implement the program and see how it's working in the community. And then, I guess then the next steps would be, if this moves forward, we'd have our first reading at a special meeting on April 9. And then the second reading would be part of Old Business on April 16. We want to make sure that this council is able to see this through, since you've been a part of this year-long process. That's all I have for you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to open up the public testimony. And City Manager, if you would, please. If you, when you're called to the podium, please talk to the City Council and tell us your name and your address. And you'll have three minutes to speak. Adam Howell?
Hello, City Council. My name's Adam Howell. I live at 1206 Avanida del Sol, here in Durango. The reason I'm participating is because I have some concerns with the revocable encroachment permit fee that city officials have to impose on the Main Avenue businesses that desire to have small portable signs in front of their storefronts. I'm personally not one of those storefront owners, but I do own a small business here in town, so I'm somewhat familiar with the struggles that small businesses can face when they're trying to keep their business going. Right now, the business licensing fee structure is asking businesses downtown to pay anywhere from 50 to 100, or somewhere around there, for business licensing fees. So I don't see any reason why those business licensing fees can't be used to regulate the standards and everything regarding these small portable signs on city sidewalks. I feel like this, businesses on Main Avenue as it is are contributing quite a bit in money to city coppers through sales tax collections. I was looking on the city's website recently and saw that restaurants and taverns on Main Avenue contributed somewhere around $232,000 in the month of February to the city. So I think that's, that's already a pretty good chunk of change that we see the Main Avenue businesses contributing. And I just ask that you eliminate that small, that revocable encroachment permit fee of $50. So thanks for taking my comments.
Thank you. No one else has signed up, so I'm gonna close the public testimony and ask for questions from the council.
I just had one question, Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
I think you clarified this in your presentation, but in the comments that we received in our email, really, the one standout was from a downtown business owner, and it was relative to the idea that there may be a better place in some circumstances for the sign. His example in his letter was that if there was a tree that was out of a tree well for some reason or other, maybe it'd be a good idea to put the sign there temporarily. It sounded like there was flexibility in the program for staff to make those sorts of amendments, but I did want to follow up and ask that question.
There is flexibility, but in general, we are gonna have them against the wall. And like we said earlier, it's for that consistency. And it's less of an obstruction there, because even if it is by a tree, people could be parking their bikes or... parking their bikes or opening their car door there. So I feel like there's more opportunities for it to interfere with pedestrians on that amendment, on that external curb zone.
I think his point was that if the staff agreed that there was a safer spot, that it might be something. As long as there was an opportunity to amend, that's my concern.
We do have, we do have the ability to offer a variance for unique situations. So that would be dependent on that situation.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions?
I have some questions about the banners.
Yes.
Today I was driving around and I looked specifically at banners. And so I saw a service station type place where they do oil changes. And they're out towards, towards the mall. And so they had some banners advertising oil changes or whatever. This will be regulating their signs. Is that right?
Yes, it's all banners.
So tell me, tell me why that if they want to put up an oil change sign that says we do oil changes, we're going to limit them for 14 days, six days, six times a year?
So they can do a sign. And that's part of the feedback that I think we got from council too, is we don't want people to be replacing signs with banners. And so if they, if they have, if that's something that they want to be communicating 365 days of the year, then they're able to get a sign that says that, and we'll be happy to work with them to get that.
With a full size?
Yeah.
And then I saw a beauty shop. It said, something about complete services. And the sign is hanging a small banner. Obviously costs a lot less than a full sign does. I mean, that's one of the reasons why business owners are choosing to put a banner up. Full-service beauty shop, and it's hanging on a structure over the sidewalk. So this would, you would be telling them that they can't have their banner there any more than 14 days, six times a year.
And once again, if it is something they want up, we'd encourage them to get a sign and work that into their sign plan.
Then I have a suggestion. We have a grant program that's through the city. I think there was $25,000 in it at one time. I don't know what the balance is. But you've also said for multi-tenants, and you gave a great example of the mall. And then there's that bookstore upstairs that I'm very concerned about. And that's in a building with multiple tenants. Why don't we offer these businesses an opportunity for a grant? Because what you're doing is, in my opinion anyway, is putting the burden back to the property owner of that building. If the bookstore gets left out, or business A, B, or C wants to have the sandwich board down there, then that's a competition. So what about offering the building that, part of that grant money to help them put up a sign that has multiple tenants on it? That's one.
I think we could look into, look into that. The grant's original intent was to spur redevelopment in North Main Camino, so it's only allowed in the North Main Camino area.
I understand.
But that's something we could look into as a grant program for signs in the.
I don't want to put a financial burden on the businesses. I'm a supporter of downtown businesses. And so I'm looking for a way that would be a win-win situation, because not everyone has the money to create a permanent sign. Those are expensive, as well as the banners are less expensive. So that was one of my suggestions that I would like council to entertain about looking at some type of a grant, because it's not just on Main Street. This impacts everyone from the photo area to Walmart, up and down the strip malls, North Main as well. So we're creating almost a monster, in my opinion, if you have multiple tenants in a location. Some tenants do advertise by themselves, but I don't want to place a financial burden on anyone. I don't think that city council's intent to do that.
And just one clarification on that as well. So for the banners, it's allowed one per business, not one per property?
I understand. Well, I saw two banners at the oil station, for example, advertising tires and something else. So you're telling him now he can't. He can only have one. That's, that's one of the questions I had about limiting the business owners' opportunities. Other questions?
Well, I just, thanks for all the staff's work over this past year. And I support all these changes but for, inconsistent with my previous objections, which is number one, relative to small portable signs, i.e. the sandwich boards. I still have concern about public safety in relation to the previously adopted sit-and-lie ordinance related to the use of public right of way. This is just the public right of way, and we did this carefully crafted document, and I still think we're opening ourselves up for further repercussions for cluttering the sidewalks, the public right of way. Secondly, the concern for visual clutter is characterized by the proponents of public comments that we have in our packets today and included in the staff report. And lastly, I just think that this is not something that will be easily enforced, and therefore ultimately leading to abuse and further proliferation in our downtown historic district. And, you know, we've worked, I've worked so hard to clean up this downtown in the past 35, 38 years and create historic, truly historic storefronts and signage and everything that goes with creation of a vital downtown economic generator. And to now have that visual clutter, as expressed by a number of our business people downtown, is nothing that I can support. So I won't be voting for this with this particular clause in there. Relative to Sweetie's comments about, Mayor Marbury's comments about the additional signs, I mean, that's what sign ordinances are all about in every community. It's about limiting signage. And it puts everybody on a fair platform in terms of the amount of square footages of advertising that they can put on any building. And whether it's a banner or two banners or whatever, you know, we've opened up a huge amount of opportunity in this ordinance. And I would support all those but for the sandwich board signs. But, I mean, that's exactly what a signed ordinance is about, is you can't have things waving in the wind forever in a community, because that doesn't, that's not good for economic, for the overall economic benefit of a community. You look like Farmington, I'm sorry to say. You look like, it's just what it is. That's the kind of community you create when you don't have a sign ordinance. A good quality, when you don't create good quality signage and advertise.
What are you objecting to? What are you objecting to in this?
You were talking, just in terms of the opening up, you wanted to have more opportunity for, for businesses. We have a, if you worked with the sign code in the past, you have a master sign ordinance, which limits any building with multiple people in there to all get together, just as you suggested, and create a sign package. So when you've got multiple tenants in a building, they all have their little placard, they all have their square footage. There are allotted amount of signage available for them to advertise their, their name, their business, their sales, whatever they want to advertise, goes into that master sign program. That's what we've had for years, and it's worked well. We, I don't know that we need to expand that for a building with multiple tenants in it.
But we have it on Main Street. I mean, she showed a picture of Main Street.
We have the master sign plans of multi-tenant buildings for exactly that.
That's exactly why. We don't need to allow multiple multiples. You know, that person upstairs has the opportunity to be on a plaque or in a, in a master sign program and advertise.
And that's why I propose that having, providing some money from the city to help that with multiple tenants. Because you're putting a financial burden back on the tenants in the building to come up with the money for a plaque, a big, a big sign.
Only so big because it's limited with the master sign program. But that's the fairness aspect of it. I mean, the first thing I did when I opened my business in 1980 was make a sign to put on that building's sign placard, on that designated directory, so that people knew where I was.
And just to clarify, there are no changes to the master sign plan and program. That's still staying forward and consistent with what we've had before.
That's why I wanted to explain, is that's been available for multiple, for buildings forever. And every, every building that has multiple tenants, whether it's attorneys upstairs or engineering firms upstairs or architects upstairs, they usually have a directory inside, either inside or on the door or.
Well, did you see that picture of the bookshop? I think it was the bookstore, wasn't it? That he has the sandwich board out front. And so that's great. I don't know if anyone else wants a sandwich board in that building. I'm not, I'm not informed of that.
You have the opportunity to, to negotiate with his tenant, or if he's the building owner, put that downstairs as it is today, if sandwich boards become approved. So, you know, or he can put a sign on the door to his stairwell going upstairs every day.
And this is actually in the alcove, so that's on private property.
Yeah, on private property. That's worked forever and is unchanged. So I don't know, that's, that's my, my two cents on the sandwich boards. I would support every other aspect of this code change but for that.
Counselor White.
I initially had some of the same concerns about the apparent conflict between allowing the temporary signs on sidewalks and our previous action around the sit-and-lie ordinance. I think the staff, I really want to praise staff for the really assiduous efforts you've made to resolve the various issues that have been brought up by the community. And I think that the proposal pretty well satisfies my concerns about that. These are stationary signs, they have to be anchored, they don't move around. And the, I think that that, and the liability is assumed by the people who put out the Concerning the banners, I concur with Counselor Bricky. I think that if people want to display a sign all year long, they, to advertise their business, and that's a legitimate business expense, and I would think well worth the investment on the part of business. I think trying to do that on the cheap with a temporary, with a banner sign does not contribute to the vitality of our downtown. And I think that, so I'm, I'm content with the, the proposal that, that staff has brought forward. And once again, that, that was not an easy path, and it was multiple efforts, and you responded extremely well to the direction from the council a few weeks ago.
Mayor Protem.
You know, this has been a tough one for me. I think what it comes down to is a matter of personal preference. And also the issue of safety and liability, but I was interested in hearing about Counselor Bricky's position being an architect. I feel like staff work really hard to try to find a compromise, and I really appreciate that. We've got, we had a lot of community input towards this. I can't help but be personally attracted to some of the pictures that I've seen of communities that have limited them more, like Breckenridge. And I know, you know, Intelliorite hasn't just on the private coves. They have some very nice streets, and they have a lot of room. And I am a little bit concerned about the visual clutter. That's my biggest concern about this. I don't consider it anti-business, because I also feel like just as important for the health of these companies is a vital downtown and an attractive downtown and a place that brings people, that people want to come to. I think that's as important as a sign that says our flavor of the day. But at the same time, I do, I appreciate the compromise, and so I think I'm willing to support it. I liked the picture that you, I'm really thankful you said only one per storefront that will limit it. And I also like it on one side. I think that helps with at least four feet. So with those, I think I would support it. But I do have my reservations, and I understand the concerns very much. So I appreciate you guys working so hard.
Counselor Batine.
Yeah, I just wanted to recognize Mr. Howell, who was the sole public participant this evening in his commentary. Just to respond to it, I appreciate you coming and appreciate you being part of the process. We've had a number of meetings to date relative to this issue, and so I've heard a number of comments like that. And I think to respond to it, take, to make an attempt to do that, you can probably see from the discussion that the implementation of a sign program that actually didn't exist, and that's for the sandwich board signs, does create additional burden on our planning department and on the code enforcement in the department. So the fee is really structured around the same thing as the bistro tables program, which does the same thing. I think there is a nexus between that fee and actual additional cost to the city to administer both the online program and registration, as well as the enforcement program. That's, those are real man hours. So though I appreciate your comments, I didn't want to address them. I think the fee is nominal comparison to what the city will bear in terms of the long-term program. And then just wanted to echo a couple of things. The staff did a great job. Thank you so much, because you took our comments from the last time we reviewed this, and you went back out to the business owners and the community, and you formed those compromises, which were challenging to do. Really appreciate those efforts, as has been echoed here before. And I think you guys did an exceptional job of reaching compromises that no, are never going to feel perfect on every side. So, but I feel really good about what you guys achieved. So thank you for that, and thanks for all your efforts. Looking forward to moving forward.
I might add to that. I mean, I look at that $50 fee for use of the public right of way forever, and the real estate involved in that, which is not anything they purchased with the building or, and compare that to quarter page ad in the Durango Herald for, you know, by comparison. For any business, I mean, for 50 bucks, for to be able to plant a sign out on a public right of way is like the cheapest investment you could, a business can make in this community. So I don't have any qualms about the $50 fee. One-time fee to require staff to enforce this forever is not a significant amount of money. I would agree with that.
And I'd like to comment that we didn't raise business fees this year either. So in, in response to Mr. Howell's comments that business fees were not permitted to be raised by the city council. So with that then, I will look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the land use and development code text amendments to update the sign code as shown in the attached document. Direct the city attorney to prepare the enacting ordinances.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Batine?
Yes.
Counselor Bricky?
No.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Marbury?
No. And with that, I think we have some announcements. It looks like our election board is here. So would you like to come to the podium, please?
And would you introduce everyone?
I will. I'm Chris Picari, deputy city clerk. I'd like to introduce our two election commissioners, who've been overseeing the whole process for us. This is Bill Dixon and Susan Ablin. And they're going to give you an overview of the results.
And before we get to the numbers, which I know y'all are just anticipating, and if I don't say a few words beforehand, you'll never listen to me. So I thought I'd get a couple of words in quickly. I want to thank the people that have been working on this election. But I'd like to start off by saying to you, I went into this election with a, being a person who did not favor mail ballots. And I want you to know that after watching this process and seeing how it works and how the checks and balances that go through it, I've become convinced that it is probably one of the most secure methods of counting ballots and collecting votes that I've ever run into. And I really think it's a fabulous program. And I want to thank a lot of the people who worked on this. We had six judges that are election judges. These are the people that actually open the ballots, they check the signatures, they count the votes, and, or they don't count the votes, but they count the number of ballots to make sure that we keep a constant record, all ballots continually checked, that every time we pass from one person to the next, the numbers are counted, and we do not lose ballots in this process. And those people were Buck Skilling, his wife Trish Skilling, Ross Park, Ellen Park, Marilyn Sandeston, and Jill Patton. And they have done a marvelous job, and they need to be thanked for that. I also want to thank Tiffany Parker and Aaron Hutchins there at the county. And you may or may not be aware that the city doesn't have its own ballot counting process. We use the cities, or the counties, rather. And the counties is a marvelous system, but it's managed by Tiffany Parker. And Aaron Hutchins is really the person that's down there making sure that it all works right. And she works for Tiffany, but she's really the mechanics of making it function. So we need to thank her. And then while we're here in the city, we need to be thanking Amy and Chris. And then while we're here in the city, we need to be thanking Amy and Chris and Ben. And Ben's here, Chris is here, and of course Amy is still down there. There are about 300 ballots that have yet to be counted. I don't know the exact number, but that's what's left to be counted. So, with that, why don't we put up the results and we'll let you see what the numbers are.
Is this a preliminary?
This is preliminary, yes. This is, the polls were open until seven o'clock and so at seven, they collected the last ballots. They're down there processing those at this time and they get to be counted. At this point, for the city council, the, I'll just read them from the top down. We got Marcus Wisner has 1,342, Jamie Millen has 6,000, 624, Barbara Noseworthy has 2,290, and Kim Baxter has 2,554. The total ballots counted as of the time that they pressed the button and gave us these numbers were 3,750. As I said, there's anomaly, 300 more down there to be counted. As you can see from this, the numbers for the two city council, city councillors, they will not be able to be changed by these final votes. So, this will be your city councillors for the next period. Onto the next one. This is the question of the day. And, but notice, while the yes votes are 1,927, the no are 8,000, 1,809, it's close enough that it can switch with these remaining ballots to be counted. And then just as a final thing to make sure you understand how this goes, because this could be very, very close, the, there are eight days in which we have to clear remaining ballots that have some discrepancy or problem with them. So, I think this question on Monday could still be close. We'll see when we get the 300 ballots in tonight, but there's still a few that have to be cleared. We've got eight days to do that. All right. Are there any questions?
Let's say how grateful we are for our board, Susan and Bill, and Chris, and Ben, and Amy, and all the people that you mentioned that have participated in the democracy of voting. And so, thank you all for your efforts. We appreciate it every time we have an election.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And you'll be back when? Don't know that answer. Okay, all right. Well, thank you so kindly. So, we know that we have two city councillors and congratulations to all. And, well, we're going to keep going with the city business. We'll keep moving. Let's see. This is an introduction of ordinances at 10.1, an ordinance changing the name of Santa Rita Drive to Larry Baldes Way and declaring an effective date. Mr. Nelson?
Yes, this is ordinance 2019-10, ordinance 2019-10. Again, this following up the action the council authorized at the last meeting.
All right, thank you. I'll look for a motion.
I missed the ordinance number?
10.
10.
2019, excuse me, oh, 2019-10.
I will move that we approve ordinance 2019-10.
I'll second.
And roll call, please.
Counselor Batine?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Brookie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Marbury?
Yes. Moving to ordinance 10.2, an ordinance amending Chapter 27 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango Land Use and Development Code by the amendment and addition of portions of sections, tables, and definitions in the said Land Use and Development Code. Mr. Nelson?
Yes, this is ordinance 2019-11. This actually combines two actions the council took to combine, to make changes to Land Use Code and Land Use and Development Code.
Thank you. I'll look for a motion.
I'll move that we approve ordinance 2019-11.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Batine?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Brookie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Marbury?
Yes. Moving to 11.1, a discussion and possible action to adopt resolution R. 2019-17 to amend the Fair Share Administrative Procedures Manual. This will, we will ask for a continuance and I'll look for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make the motion to continue this item to May 7.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Batine?
Yes.
Counselor Brookie?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
And Mayor Marbury?
Yes. We're moving into council reports and actions. And this is a time when the council has a chance to talk about the boards and liaisons for community events. And so, Counselor Batine?
I don't have anything tonight. I just would congratulate our two new city councillors. Be the first, we have one of them in the audience tonight. So, congratulations on your win. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
All right.
Yes, I would like to congratulate our two new city councillors as well. And to suggest that I also, I also wanted to thank our other two council candidates for running and bringing us choice in our community elections. It gave us open dialogue, it gave us debate, and it was a really wonderful thing to have four good, strong candidates running. The two, I look forward to working with the two that have been inducted and, and bringing you into your new positions. I think that you ran very strong campaigns showing your hard work, dedication, and effort to understand the issues facing our community, and that was reflected by the votes. So, job well done. I did want to let the council know that the alliance board is in the process of looking at some interviews, possibly next week for three, what we're looking at is potentially three local candidates. So, we're very happy about that. I wanted to give you that update.
Great.
Thank you.
Who are they?
Counselor Brookie.
I have one announcement for an event. It's a new event hosted this year by Mountain Studies Institute, which is the San Juan Resilience Youth Summit. And it'll be held at the La Plata County Fairgrounds on April 18th from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And it's students from Silverton School, Durango High School, Big Picture School, and Escalante Middle School present their research on topics related to the theme "Resilience in the Face of Wildfire." This event has opened the public and it will, they have group activities with the students, particularly at 9:30 in the morning and 12:00 PM, kind of the wrap-up session at 12:00 PM. At, again, that's at the fairgrounds. I assume that's in the, one of the exhibit halls there. But where these students will present their, their comments and so they want community leaders, anybody that's interested in helping youth understand things about our community. And this is a great effort put on by the Mountain Studies Institute in their quest to bring youth from all our different communities, on the, particularly on this watershed that are served by the Anus watershed, to talk about different issues related to that. So, April 18th.
All right, thank you. Counselor White?
Yeah, I've got a couple of forthcoming events. I'll try to be very brief. There are two events noteworthy on Thursday of this week, one of which needs to be reiterated. The Southwest Center for Independence is, has a waiting list for housing vouchers. It has been closed for quite some time, I believe years, and it's going to be open for one day on Thursday. So, if anyone sees this broadcast or anyone in the room knows someone who might be in need of a housing voucher, this is a really important opportunity to get in mind. Secondly, also on Thursday, Thursday in the afternoon at 4:30, the three candidates for the Durango Fire, the Durango Police Department captaincy will be here for a reception. And we look forward to meeting them. There's a couple of routine things that are worth mentioning of what things online at the city, at the city website. The police department has now instituted a, an online reporting option for non-emergency issues. Look at durangogov.org/policeservices. And also relatively new in the last few weeks is an online portal for utility and other payments. The other thing I wanted to mention was an event I intended last week, which was a film and discussion by the Good Food Collective. The film was "A Place at the Table," which discusses the issue of food insecurity. And it's really interesting that earlier in this meeting, we had a presentation from the Health Department. And food insecurity is very much a public health issue. And one of the, they, one of the programs they administer has to do with getting food for women and children. But the film highlights challenges that emerge where people are on food stamps, snap in the current jargon, lose their benefits because they get a job and earn a little too much. And there was a vivid example of, of a single mother with a couple of kids who is making do decent, sort of with food stamps, and she finally got a job and was really excited about that, and then she lost her benefits and her, the, her ability to feed her family went down. So, these are huge issues. Some of you may know that I have done some independent research on food insecurity, particularly as it pertains to La Plata County. Round numbers, a third of the students in 9R are eligible to free, for free and reduced lunches. And one of the things the film relates is the fact that the amount of money that agencies have to produce school meals is about a dollar per meal. Try to, try to get, try to buy anything to eat in a grocery store for, for a dollar, especially if it's actually decent food. So, these are major issues. The Good Food Collective is doing some really great work in our community. And if you get a chance to see that film, I would urge you to do so.
Thank you. I'd like to remind our community that we have a, a food and a utility rebate program. And the paperwork can be picked up right here in the lobby of City Hall and I believe also at the senior center. So, please do check that out. And also, I'd like to remind people that CDOT is spending quite a bit of money improving 17th Street, 22nd Street, and 32nd Street for the benefit of our community. I've watched them all winter and now I get to see the benefits of 17th Street. It's safer for pedestrians to cross. There was a question online, was this City of Durango money? And the answer is no, it's not. It's CDOT money. And so, I feel very, very grateful to CDOT for coming into our community and making these really needed adjustments for, safety for our pedestrians. With that, city manager, do you have anything you'd like to report?
I have nothing.
Well, alrighty. Next week will be the last city council meeting for Counselor White and myself. We began in 2011 and we're, will be going out in 2019. And so, with the new city council will be inducted on April the 16th. So, we'd like to invite you all to come to City Hall and partake with the festivities or watch it online with the new city council being inducted.
I just want to mention and acknowledge the city manager, he has provided us with a list, a 13-page list of milestones and memories for the last eight years. We will, we will distill this further before making final remarks. If we started reading, we'd be still here next week.
That's right.
But, but it is, you know, I think we can individually consider, think of highlights. Since my wife was at the podium earlier tonight, I have to acknowledge that one of my personal highlights was giving that proclamation for equal payday to my own wife last year.
Yes. Well, thank you so much. Don't make me cry. Okay. We have lots to celebrate in the City of Durango. No matter which way this election comes out, I find it really important that people stepped up and did vote. And so, we have, I'm very grateful to the excellent leadership of the city manager and the department heads, our assistant city managers, Kevin Hall and Amber Blake, our airport directors, our Parks and Rec people, the transit operations, our library. We're very blessed in this community because much of what we appreciate is paid for by sales tax, not our property taxes or not even special districts like we see in other communities. So, there's lots, there's lots to be happy about in Durango. And I've been here about 45 years. Counselor Brookie's been here about 38?
39, yeah.
39. So, we have seen the changes and I can actually say that I like the changes. I remember the good old days with billboards. I, I don't call those the good old days. No rec center, no library. We have a wonderful hospital community. And in August, the sewer plant will be up and running and I look forward to the ribbon cutting and all the good benefits that that brings to the residents of Durango. So, thank you so much.
If I may add to my, my report, something I had just simply forgotten to put on my list. There was a utilities commission meeting yesterday where we got an update on the wastewater plant. We also got updates on the drought management plan as well as the rate study. The commission is doing really good work. There was a third thing that came up, which is the possibility of so-called forest improvement bonds, which I believe is study, the first study session for the new council. Unclear whether that's something that works for us, but the, but the commission is, I think, doing really good work. And I won't miss it.
And I know I'll be attending the joint meeting of the Parks and Rec, Multimodal, and Natural Lands Board this week. Gosh, there was one more thing. Oh, the library board that I'm on. On April the 11th, it's the Literary Festival. It begins at 11, at 5:30 at the library. And our city manager will be introducing our guest author, Chris Bojalan.
Bohalian.
See, I never said, Bohalian. Thank you. I can call him Bojangles. So, thank you so much and we hope that you can attend at the Literary Festival. Always please tune in, come down to City Hall, call a city councillor. Our numbers are published in the newspaper and we try to communicate with our folks and see at the grocery store. So, thank you all for, for tuning in tonight. Sorry we don't have the rest of the results. I think it'll be posted on DGOV.
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much. We'll see you in two weeks. Good night.